There you go. Make sure it's green. It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, July 13th. Carl, there you are. Give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Present.
Ronane. Lunsman.
Present.
Reif.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. No one has signed up to speak at our, oh, I guess the first order business we need to approve last week's minutes for July 6th. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
I'll move, please.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. Everyone is here, so I'm just going to do a roll, a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. No one has signed up to speak for the open forums. We'll move along to the consent counter. We've got two items here today in the routine city business. Can I get a motion to approve those two consent counter items, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Remley and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of these items? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion does carry. Consent counter is passed. We'll move along to new business. First, we've got a petition for vacation of the public right of way. Entire 66-foot-wide 10th Street South public right of way between 2nd Avenue Southwest and 3rd Avenue Southwest adjacent lots, 1 and 24 blocks, 34 lots, 12 and 13 on blocks 33, West Aberdeen and 16-foot-wide public alley right of way between 9th Street South and 11th Street South. Brett, are you here to talk to us? Standing podium. I hope the TV camera can get that back there. Tell us about that vacation of public.
This is a housekeeping item. We're requesting to vacate these sections of right of ways where the city public workshop sits on 3rd Avenue. And actually, the right of way goes through the building itself. And we're just requesting to remove the right of way so we can replant property into one big lot.
Moved.
Tell you?
I didn't move, but I'll second it.
Okay. Sounds good. A good motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions for Brett Bill? Otherwise, Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Thank you, Brett. Thank you all. Next, we've got a resolution authorizing the execution of the contractual documents with the state of South Dakota for the receipt of the CARES Act funding to address COVID-19 public health crisis. Carl, what can you tell us about that authorization?
Thank you, Mayor. This is virtually the first step in the process of applying and being approved for CARES funding. Once we have this resolution in place, then the city manager will be able to sign any agreements. We'll be able to register on the state's website. We'll have to do a risk assessment questionnaire. After that, we'll be able to compile all the different expenses that we can find that are allowable and submit them on the website and hopefully get approved for funding.
Sounds good. And it sounded like the lion's share of that was going to be police salaries?
It sounds like the police salary if it's qualified. Certain fire and ambulance, if they're qualified. They even mentioned on a webinar that I was on that if you want to stockpile some items for any future second waves or any other pandemics that might come along, like say, for instance, hand sanitizer, masks, and things like that, that we can do that. And of course, any deep cleaning that we do, any wages for that are applicable, so.
Sounds good. So it sounds like it'd be a few dollars and cents. Can I get a motion to authorize that resolution?
Move. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Rux. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion.
That's a resolution, so we'll need.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll need a voice vote on that.
Jump ahead of myself here. Carl, why don't you give me a voice vote?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got hearing on special retail liquor licenses for the Aberdeen Downtown Association's events on July 18th, July, August 6th, and August 28th and 29th on Main Street with request for the community event permits for the same possible approval of the special liquor licenses and community event permits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Reif. I see the Downtown Association is here. Do you wish to speak or?
Just in case you guys have any questions, I want to make sure I'm here.
Has anyone got any questions for Shelley from the Downtown Association? Unless, Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Abstain.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid recommendation for the 2020 old building tuck pointing and brick replacement project at the water treatment plant. Possible approval to award the bid to Mid Continental Restoration Company for $46,859. Bob, you're already at the podium. Tell us about that tuck pointing project, please.
Yeah, when, while we were evaluating the roof for repairs for leaking, we noticed that the brickwork on this section of the building was in pretty poor condition. So we needed to try and get this taken care of, so.
Move to approve and second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Johnson. So how much of the building would you say that that constitutes needing re-tuck?
The entire building needs work. This will be a third of the building, the 1980s addition. So we're going to try budgeting for next year to do the remainder of the building. We've been working off and on ourselves on certain areas that were bad, but this is up in the air and it's not something that the general maintenance guys can handle.
So Bob, are these guys out of Mitchell or somewhere out of the southern part of the state?
They're a larger company, but they're out of like Parkston, this local, the local people.
Got it. Got it. We've got a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Bob on the tuck pointing project? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment and change order for the North Dakota Street Reconstruction Project. Possible approval and the payment amount of $110,901.19 and the change order number three in the amount of $173,250 to re-deconstruction. Robin, you see you're up here to tell us about those payments.
You'll see the change order, $173,000. Actually, we will be taking back out about $148,000. So the net increase for that rec trail to move it from a four inch to a six inch is going to cost about $25,000. Our experience has been that a lot of those rec trails do not weather very well. Do not weather very well when we put snow removal equipment, when parks takes their snow removal equipment out, we're breaking those slabs. So our attempt is to try to improve those slabs, hopefully get a longer, longer-term slab out of it. We think $25,000 is worth it. We will be opening that whole section, that half mile, on Wednesday of this week.
And Robin, where did the savings of $140,000 come from?
The savings of the 140?
Right.
We will be change ordering out the four inch.
Oh, I see. This is the total project cost of that. I understand. All right. Sounds good. Can I get a motion to make that payment and change order?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions?
What will we be seeing from the hail damage that was done to the road?
Actually, all we did, we did core samples on it. What we were finding was the top eight inches or so was marred. And Reedies brought in a grinder and they actually ground off with a diamond grind for that half for about 800 feet. It's going to have a slightly different texture, look a little bit different, but it's going to be structurally fine.
Okay. Sounds good. Carl, go ahead and give me a roll call vote on the payment and change order, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid recommendation on the vehicle lift support and stands for ride line. Possible approval to award the bid to D&amp;J Equipment Sales Service LLC in the amount of $40,549.8 and to authorize that payment to D&amp;J Service Sales. Tom, I see that you're here to tell us all about that lift.
We did have three bidders on that. The first two that we had, one of them did not submit a bid bond that was a requirement of the bid, so they were rejected. And the second one, because it is a federal project, is required to be a Buy America project. And the second one did not meet the Buy America as those lifts were made in Italy. So our recommendation is to go with the D&amp;J bid that we have. That bid is actually lower than the maximum grant amount that we received for this project. So we're coming under, under what the maximum was going to be.
Thank you, Tom.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Remley. Does anyone have any questions as far as the bid process was concerned or anything else to do with this lift? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the recommendation on cultural resource inventory and architectural recording for the airport. Possible approval to accept proposal from Metcalf Archaeology.
I think you missed G.
Sorry about that. Jumping entirely out of order. If it doesn't bother you, I will go ahead and complete H and move my way back up to G. Possible approval to accept the proposal from Metcalf Archaeological Consultants, Inc. for estimated amount of $39,615 to conduct that cultural services. And it looks like Rich, you're on the line here for us. Tell us about Metcalf and that process.
Okay, yeah, Metcalf was the only bidder that submitted their proposal. We sent this out to three different companies. Metcalf was the only one that replied to it. What this is basically, and these folks are out here, they started this afternoon, there's six of them, and they are going to walk the entire airfield looking for anything of historical or archaeological significance. Once we get this done, going forward with federal projects, we'll never have to have this done again because it'll be on record that they either found something or found nothing.
And Rich, this was a requirement for various federal issues?
That's correct, Mayor. This is actually money that was built into our master plan and airport layout plan project that started last year.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Remley. Does anyone have any questions as it relates to this archaeological program? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Now, we'll move back up to item G. Letter of agreement with Helms and Associates for the assistance with the purchase of snow removal equipment for the airport. Possible approval and authorization for the city manager to sign the letter of agreement with Helms and Associates for the assistance of that purchase. Rich?
Yes, so we're looking for two pieces of equipment. We desperately need to replace our 1996 Osh Kosh rotary plow. We've, over the years, we've been able to maintain it, but we really had some problems with it last year. And as I said, it's a 1996, so it's definitely met its expected useful life. The other item we're looking at replacing is our 2002 Tyler de-icing truck. And we use that for de-icing the runways.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. Attorney Wager, I'd be interested, given that this one involves dollars and cents, does it require a roll call vote? Okay, so.
Make sure I'm on. Would ask the council, and I apologize, Rich, I haven't talked to you about this, but I noticed as this came up on the agenda item that there's a limitation of liability in the amount of $50,000 on this. And I would like the council's authorization, although ultimately to approve and authorize the signing of this, I would like the council's authorization to negotiate that limitation of liability upwards, if possible.
Do you need amended motion for that?
No, no, I just want the council to understand that if I have authorization, if we have authorization to sign this, that's fine, but I may try to get them to increase the limitation of liability from $50,000.
Okay. Does anyone have any objection to Ron's request to increase the amount of liability to be negotiated? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the change order and payment for the AIP 346000140 2019 taxiway improvement. Change order number two is an increase of $26,254.30 to re-deconstruction. And payment number three, work on project re-deconstruction, is $235,923.77. Possible approval for the city manager to sign the change order and make that payment. So Rich, you're still here. Go ahead and tell us about where you guys are.
So the reason for this change order is because as they were constructing the new taxiway Alpha, they were unable to, or had very much difficulty reaching compaction on one side and greater difficulty on the other side of the runway. We're looking at a 50-day shutdown of the runway and in order to keep on to that schedule, we had to bring in additional P209 for the sub base and then additional GeoGrid for stabilization.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second. Councilman Johnson, does anyone have any questions for Rich about this change order or payment? Otherwise, Carl, go ahead and give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment request for the work on airport improvement projects, AIP payment. The first payment is for the master layout plan to Helms and Associates of $4,031.36. The second payment, taxiway C, also to Helms and Associates, $30,373.97. And third, for the aviation apron to Helms and Associates of $15,641.3. So this would, motion would be possible approval and authorization of city manager to sign the payment request to Helms and Associates. Rich, tell us about those payments to Helms.
And these are all payments for work completed to date. You know, I need to back up to item I. I did not explain line item number two. I totally overlooked that after that change order. The 235,923.77 is for work completed to date and material stockpiled on site. So I just wanted to clear that up. On item J1, that is for the master plan. That is, again, work completed to date. We're actually looking at a relatively soon date, possibly by the end of August, of wrapping this project up and starting the closeout process on that. Line item two for project 40, 2019 taxiway Charlie. Again, this is for engineering services to date, engineering monitoring and journaling of the project. And then line item three, project 41, 2020, is for the aviation, general aviation project. And that was, we received that 100% entitlement grant for that project. So that moved that out of the 2022 timeframe and we're going to back that up and hopefully be able to go out for bids at the end of this month.
Thank you, Rich. Can I get a motion to make those payments, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Does anyone have any questions about the Helms work on the airport? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of the bill list for July 13th at the end of our packet served. But no additions since this packet has been printed. Can I get a motion to pay the bills listed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Remley and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have anything to add about the bills? Otherwise, Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the city manager's report. Joe, what have you got for us here tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things about the room arrangement. For those that are watching from home and maybe seeing some of the council members they haven't seen for a while, everybody has returned. Councilman Ronane is out on business tonight, so there are eight seats. We'll always have to have somebody sitting out. I know oftentimes people are traveling. I think one thing we've learned from COVID is if you're out on business and you get the opportunity to call in or zoom in, it still counts, so we'll be able to do that. So I think we've learned a little bit. We've spaced out. All of the council members are having six-foot distance between them. And I really wanted to hear if you have any input, the way the staff is organized down here, from some of us that would have been up there before, and allowing for the podium for public and the other staff members. We were down here today looking a little bit, a likely change a little bit in the future, but this is a run of it. I think the staff is happy, for those of them that were always in the room and sitting with you, at least to be in the same room with you now. That was a big goal that came out in my first week, so I think that was good. Also, in relation to that, we know that we have the nameplates that are stuck on, literally, they're stuck onto the podium. So we're getting new ones so that they can be moved around. There are some other meetings occurring in here, so perhaps we could get some for them if they desire. But I sent you out the design the other day. The thought process is to have them in black instead of brown, matching, somewhat matching the wood and the chairs with the city logo. There has been some discussion, some requests of, do we want to allow some creativity in our name tags and color? So I just wanted to hear what your thoughts are. That's really up to you to decide if you want that or how we want to move forward. We'll be placing that order this week. We'll be getting a better proof, I think, in the next couple of days, so we'll move ahead with that if you don't give us any other direction.
Thank you, Joe. And one of the other items that you had addressed in the email was that, and I guess separately asked this of the city attorney, if an item goes before the zoning and planning board, it's no longer, that's out of our jurisdiction. It's not something that we can take a stab at or overrule.
That's correct.
And that's separate with the county. The county commission can overrule a county zoning board issue. Understood. So I was conflicting.
That's just the board of zoning adjustment, not planning. Because every planning commission item comes before the city council to be adopted.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
So Mayor Shawman, could I compound on that a little bit? I had an issue several years ago where a person was required to have their services terminated. The city was in the process of demolishing some property and had to have the utility, the electrical terminated for that. And the Northwestern Energy at that time wanted to know what our authority was to do that because ordinarily that would be a court order to terminate service for demolition. So it gave me an opportunity to really review what our home rule means and the process by which our zoning board works because it was a zoning board that ultimately approved that demolition. And what we find is that because we're a home rule municipality, our zoning board acts as our board of last resort when it comes to zoning board type of decisions, board of adjustment types of decisions. And that's by, we have that in by ordinance. I know that the county has a little different process, but our zoning official at the, at third floor acts as the initial decider. If somebody doesn't like that person's decision, then they can appeal to the board of zoning adjustment. And then that decision, as far as the city is concerned, is final. And at that point, if somebody has a problem, then they would appeal it to the circuit court.
Understood.
And just so you're aware, having reviewed that, corporate counsel for Northwestern Energy reviewed it to make sure that we were correct, and we are, because we do have a process in place that provides complete due process for people who have an issue and appeal of a zoning ruling.
Thank you for that clarity, Ron. Does anyone else have anything to add before we?
Take a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Who's that?
Go ahead, Alan.
Councilman Rux.
Alan.
Alan.
A question for Robin. Can you clarify the timeline for the street project that's being done on South 3rd Street between Simmons and Melgarde Road?
Waterline?
Uh huh.
The waterline, we did, because of personnel shortages and other projects last week, we did take last week off for the most part. They're back resuming that work this week. Once we get the water main in, which should be done by the end of the week, then we'll have another week or so while we test. And then once we get passing tests, we'll go back in and we'll repair the asphalt. I'm guessing it's still going to be two, three weeks of mess yet, but they should be back into their driveways and able to do their things after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Rux.
I see that 15th, it looked like they moved back home into that area behind May Overby.
They are hoping to get started on that in the next week or two. A lot of it is dependent on Moxon Creek elevation. It's still a little higher than we'd like to be, but they know that we can't postpone it forever, so they're planning on toughing their way through it even with higher creek elevations than what we'd like.
And that was the next question I was going to ask, is what does the timeframe look like since this is really kind of odd that the creek is this high in July?
Yeah. The, presumably, we're going to be well into the school year. We have met with school officials. They will have to reroute traffic. The fact that we have State Street open again is going to help us. Last year was really, really tough when we had the intersection of State and 15th closed off. So this at least should help families get in, but they won't be able to get back out through 15th. It'll be a little longer route for them. I'm guessing you'll be in this, well into September for completion.
Okay. Thanks, Robin.
I would, oh, Councilman Remley.
Yeah, just a couple of curious people asked me what was going on with North Harrison Street, north of 8th Avenue, about two blocks.
We had a lift station at that location that, the lift station was put in in 1970, or was abandoned in 1977. We just put gravity pipe through. That pipe rotted out and was failing. And you could see the tree that was above it had dropped about four inches. So dirt was gradually falling out through the pipe. And so we did have to replace that piece of pipe. And it was something that I would say was inferior quality pipe installed some 40 years ago.
And how did we notice that, that the tree, the tree settled that much? You could see the boulevard where the tree was at had dropped, you know, like this below the curb.
Thank you very much, Robin, for the input on those various projects. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Remley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We are adjourned.